I'd like to call us back into session again, council. We've been staying pretty active today and I'm glad we're staying on time. I would say I don't foresee us staying much past six, I hope, tonight. So, after last week, last minute. But, anyway, that being said, we'll get into the city manager's briefing. The first one, we'll start out with the Burton Station Cost Participation Agreement. Dave, you going along with that, buddy?
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
You're quite welcome.
Mayor, members of council, I return today in an open briefing focused on the Cost Participation Agreement for the downstream drainage improvements. Just to refamiliarize yourselves with the Phase One SGA construction project, it is to expand Burton Station Road and to obstruct Tolliver Road. Incorporated cul-de-sacs because the Phase Two requires us to get an access railroad crossing Norfolk Southern. It is to design, and we'll be designing, the second half of Tolliver. We'll look at the expansion of Airline and then continue the extension of expanding Burton Station. And the total view, total view looks like this. You can see the additional blue sections here with Burton Station expanded all the way to Miller Store and then Tolliver Road tying into Air Rail Avenue. And, of course, it drops south and goes north, but we've got to work out this design here to, to be able to handle the traffic. We current, our current funding, which means we have appropriations on hand to conduct a lion's share of the work that we're doing, the design and the right-of-way acquisitions. The ride, just wanted to throw a quick chart up there so that you knew that we are proceeding with three negotiations simultaneously. They're all in different phases concerning right-of-way and the easement. And you can see the quantities listed on your briefing there. But what we're focused on today is drainage areas. And as I've briefed you in the past, one of the critical factors for Burton Station is the drainage. And so we have several studies in hand, also a compilation of studies that Dan Adams, project engineer from Water Resources, put together, pulling all the data. And we basically have a drainage area symbolized by the green area. Of course, it fringes over, but we're just focused on parcels at this time that's supported by the Burton Station Lake. And just to reorient anybody who's confused, this is North Hampton Boulevard, this is Burton Station. And, of course, this is I-64 North, this is Lake Wright. And this is Wesleyan Drive extended to this point right here. The purple magenta area that's shown on here is really an area that drains to the south and actually drains towards the watershed. And the follow-on phases of the industrial part that the Airport Authority is looking to do will require some additional collection and storage ponds because Lake Wright is not a BMP, it's a reservoir and requires complete treatment before any waters enter that. So we're really going to focus on what we're doing with the infrastructure and the initial Phase One developments that are drained in the green area. Kind of blew it up a little bit on the parcel map. Here's Tolliver Road, and Tolliver Road will be the collector system. This little offshoot here is the stormwater easement that brings our collector pipes to the head of the lake. And then the lake is drained by a weir here at the southeastern corner. And then there is a conveyance system that is part of the Cost Participation Agreement that we are working with S&amp;J Truck Terminal to, to cost participate. And that is what you have on your agenda today to approve or to give guidance if otherwise. It has a not-to-exceed of $550,000. I'm happy to report that the sole determination has been completed and approved and that the purpose is listed there, basically to improve the Burton Station outfall and the downstream conveyance system. The description of work is not only to lower the weir, a foot and a half, to create the 100-year capacity that we need to support the development of an unimproved area called Burton Station, but it's also to improve 400, or 3,475 linear feet of conveyance downstream. And we're happy to say that this will be very, this will be an enhancement to flooding that's already occurring in this area. It'll both deepen and widen that capability so that the outflows from the lake and the collection system that's coming off the adjoining parcels will be able to not, will be able to be conveyed in a more expeditions manner. And then that, of course, runs to the point where you have an intersection with Baker Road and Culvert that's just west of Diamond Springs. And that, of course, goes underneath that complex and then ties into the adjoining lake The construction agent for S&amp;J will construct in accordance with drawings and specifications that we have completed under a third-party AE firm. We, the city, will acquire all easements associated with providing the space necessary to do this construction and that we will provide 500 and reimburse the developer an amount not to exceed $550,000 to do this. The developer will be responsible for all permits and bonds necessary to perform the work, as would occur with any of our projects, and they are to build in accordance with those plans and specs that we have provided them. And you, of course, are required to approve this cost participation. That is extraneous to an appropriation of a, of a project that we would have the authority to go get the right-of-way enisements, but we need your permission to do a cost participation. So, in closing, I show you the development map and ask you, do you have any questions with regards to today's agenda?
Thank you for the presentation today. If any questions from Councilmembers, John?
Could you go back to the map that showed the Lake Wright area for where that thing's called?
Yes, sir.
So, I realize that's not part of the vote today.
Check.
Are we going to make, are we going to have, are we going to baseline the water quality that's in the lake so that we know that, in fact, later there can be a claim for the discharge? Are we going to have, so if you're going to discharge it there, which that shows, right?
Are you talking about this?
Yes.
This is just, this is a map.
I'm just trying to...
This is, this is a map that we're using to address a discussion to follow on, on the Phase Two Airport Industrial Park.
I realize that's not part of the vote, but since it was up there by...
I'm a long ways from getting that one, Councilman Moss. Yes, sir.
I know, it's a different issue, but you have it up there outside.
Any other questions or comments?
It's one of my exhibits.
We thank you very much for your presentation.
Yes, sir.
We'll now go to the 15th Street Pier. Doug, you're up.
I am, thank you, mayor. What I'm going to do is, Pam's switching us over to the different presentation, is make, share with you the proposal that came in on the 15th Street Pier. So, this, this presentation is really for, for your information. It also allows the public to understand what, some of what's been in the paper, but also what some of the details are of the proposal, and candidly to allow you to have a thoughtful discussion in a few minutes about some of the financial possibilities in your closed One of the slides that's in your packet and it's available publicly, obviously, is this iconic destination piece. There's another 20 or 25 slides that go with it, sort of talking about what that means. I'm not walking you through those today. It's the one change we've made to this presentation, we've simply deleted those, but I just want you to know you all have those and happy to certainly talk through those with you if you like. The proposal that came in talks about, obviously, the pier, a park, potential park, restaurant and entertainment components, and then, obviously, a hotel and timeshare piece. We're talking about, we've been, the proposal that has come in is a $245 million mixed-use destination. That is public and private dollars, and we'll talk about that in a few moments. The, the components are hospitality, lodging and vacation lodging, hotel and vacation lodging, restaurants, retail space both on the pier and on the other side of Atlantic Avenue, a new 880-foot concrete pier that would replace the, the wooden city pier, and a parking facility that would be as many as 1,000 parking spaces on the other side of Atlantic Avenue. And then we'll talk some about the Oceanfront Park and Plaza. You'll see the footnote at the bottom that says, "These are for massing purposes," the illustrations are for massing purposes. We've had a couple of folks call up and say, "I like or I don't like the architecture that's in here." It really is not anything, this is not what it would ultimately look like if, if you all decided that, that you were interested, but again, it just gives a sense of, of scale and mass. The pier, the entertainment component involves, obviously, the ability to go 880 feet out in the water and look out and see through the scenic overlook. The skywheel component, there would be restaurants, there'd be retail on the pier itself, there, the, obviously, the opportunity to fish. And while I don't fish as much as some do, they tell me that if you get 80 under 80 feet out on that pier, that there's some, some pretty interesting things that you can catch. Councilman Devon Portman, you've seen the, the potential, and the paper was written about this weekend, of the Surfing Hall of Fame that would be out, could, could be out there, perhaps some exhibition and meeting space. And then, obviously, we'll talk a minute about the, the Park Plaza possibility. The lodging components, obviously, are the two larger components there. 150 to 200-room full-service hotel, national franchise, we have not heard anything about what that franchise might be, and then a 330-key vacation, basically, timeshare property that would be operated by a national chain, and we have not been told the name there either. The hotel, just to touch on that, the closer piece, and I'll show you, I probably should, if we were doing this, I might have showed you this earlier, but again, this is their presentation. But on the, the northern end of the site where the, the breakers are today would be the hotel component. And you can see there'd be, obviously, the 150 to 200 rooms. There would be some level of meeting and conference space as well as restaurants and a couple of pools, both an indoor and an outdoor pool. On the southern side of what would be a new 15th Street scenic view there would be the vacation lodging, the, the timeshare component, there would also be hotel at times, again, would be operated by a national chain, have meeting space, restaurants, indoor/outdoor pools. The pier has not only the, the skywheel that you can see, but also a certain level of, certain amount of retail and restaurants out there. And then the Plaza, and we'll show you this in a little more detail, but is a, and one of the things I'm, I'm learning from, from you all and others is just the, the value and the emotion around these public parks at the oceanfront, the importance of these public parks. And this is an opportunity to conceivably get an additional one there at 15th Street that would, and so, obviously, what happens is the pier lines up at the end of a new 15th Street as opposed to being sort of off-center in the block. This gives you just a sense of looking from Atlantic out through the, the new view corridor there at 15th over, over a public plaza that lines out straight to the, to the pier project. And again, just a visual to give you a sense as you step a little bit further back of what that conceivably could look like. So how does it happen in terms, from the, again, from the proposer's perspective? This starts to give you a better sense of where we are and, and some of the things that you've got in terms of the, the reality that 14th Street today does not line up with the, the connection to the oceanfront, and so there'll be, there would be an opportunity to change that. But the private group has got control of, you know, the things that you can see in yellow, and they have the franchise agreements for the, for the pier. One of the initial concepts they've proposed is to actually swap this land, the right-of-way at 14th Street, for land that they control here at what would line up, again, with 15th Street that allows you to, to punch that through. So you line up the, the new pier, would then line up with 15th Street, which gives you that pedestrian connection that goes out straight to the pier right at the, the center of the block, right at the, the edge of the block. And again, just a little bit of a visual, looking from, from above. The other opportunity that we, that they have proposed is that 15th Street, they've, they've now controlled this entire waterfront and have, we have the opportunity to look at, take, buying as much as 75 feet of additional space at the oceanfront to combine with that 15th Street to create that City Park Plaza or what they're referring to as the pier And that just shows it on the screen. So you end up with, again, proposing a hotel here, the timeshare piece here, park in the center, and then the redevelopment area there on the right-hand side is the retail and parking. So that actually lays it out a little bit better, so you can see the 330 keys for the vacation ownership and the, the hotel itself. So if you look down at the bottom, you can start to get an order of magnitude of the different components. In addition to the, the rooms, you've got the 800 to 1,000 parking spaces and about 70,000 square feet of retail on the other side of Atlantic Avenue. The garage, again, you can see here, we've got the, the retail up front and the opportunity for the garage in the back that would support all of the components here. And again, as I mentioned, what's referred to the Saboni family that owns the, this space here, that retail and second-floor office would be order of magnitude 70,000 square feet. So, from the proposer's perspective, sort of what, what do they propose happens next? Obviously, continue to, to meet with us and, and finalize any sort of redevelopment scope or plans and think through what we all think could be the, the art of the possible here. Talk to the various interest groups and we, what a little bit of conversation we've had in the, in the last couple of weeks, we've talked a lot about the importance of public engagement, civic engagement, and folks really understanding what's being proposed, what's the impact from a traffic perspective, from a parking perspective. But also, you've got this public act, public asset that is the pier. And so, obviously, anything that's going to happen to that, the public needs to have an opportunity to, to weigh in on that. In their minds, if things were to go well and they were to get their permits and things, they could start on all of this as soon as fall of this year. And that's really the proposal that they sent in, I share with you all, that, that's been shared publicly, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments? Nice presentation, though. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, we'll now go to other comments, like city council comments. Do I have any? John?
I'm trying to understand. I know that there's this proposal to do hot lanes on the interstate on the current HOV lanes, and that hasn't, you know, hasn't got much attention, so I'd like to talk about that. We haven't taken any position, but it doesn't make a lot of sense.
Where is this, John?
This is the existing HOV lanes on the interstate that go between Billy Greenbrier, a little bit south of there, and all the way to the base.
Eventually, it could make a circle.
It could. But here, but here, people need to, this is the part that never gets explained very well. Because I've used the HO hot lanes in, in DC, and this is not DC, and that's why that system's never worked well, let's just be honest. But let's think about, walk this through. During the peak-time traffic, if you're, meet the HOV criteria, you don't pay anything. And then up in Northern Virginia, it's almost 20 bucks to do the, at, at peak hour to drive the full length, about 20 bucks. Not many people drive that, that link, but, but the real money is not made during the HOV hours because not many people can make the business calculus work on an everyday basis. So what happens, the real revenue is generated in the non-peak hours when people are already using it for free, where it can go on any time. That's where the money gets collected. It's less money, but a higher volume of dollars. But in reality, the public is now paying for something that they can use now at no cost, and it's having no impact on the utilization rates of the HOVs during rush hour and therefore is making no material contribution to traffic congestion reduction, but it's just a method of raising revenue. It's just a revenue mechanism. And that's not, for something that the public has paid for and for which no additional capacity is being provided. So there's a lot of principles behind that that just don't make sense. And if you're saying out there, "We just found another way to get into people's pocket," then people just ought to say that, but they put this fancier frosting on this cake, making it sound like they're creating an opportunity, but it's not about the opportunity, it's about raising revenue. And I'm just saying, my point of view, because I know this council hasn't taken a position, probably maybe not take one. I know you're on HR tax and you're...
I'll be glad to give you what I, my belief is.
But I think that that needs a lot more public discussion and a lot more public transparency and honesty about what the situation really is and why.
I would sit back and say to you, everything is being transparent, and I am insisting on that. As far as what you've just referred to, I think you're quite aware, we've got nine projects in the region that we're trying to fund. And the reality is with, and I appreciate everything Governor McDonald and the legislation did as far as getting us funds to fund those nine projects, they don't come close to funding the projects that are there. So every, you know, from tolls to hot lanes to gas tax to real estate tax to reducing to living within, getting two or three projects done instead of nine are being looked at right now. On the hot lane thing, though, John, this is something that's more or less being pushed right now, I'd say, by VDOT, but the upfront information says the expense, expense of converting to hot lanes would be more costly than the money that would be generated. So I don't, at this point, and let me say, as things progress, things can change, but the direct financial impact, information that I have read, says there could be this huge investment to convert, and in turn, the revenues never come close to paying for what it costs to convert. So I don't know that it would be a wise business decision, but that's my first read and I share that with you. And that has been discussed publicly.
Well, probably, but my point is, the revenue part is, but the point about is, in terms of a way of, as a traffic congestion mechanism, it doesn't accomplish that. It's not the same dynamic as Northern Virginia, and that's my only point I was trying to...
And I'm not prepared to agree or disagree with you on that because I'm letting people that I consider to be now very knowledgeable in this to provide that information to me, which I have not had provided to this day. But upfront, it doesn't look like a very wise decision.
I just, since I know sometimes when we don't see anything, silent is consent, so I just, and that got a lot of publicity early on and kind of died away. And I did talk with, on one other item, I did talk with Mark and Mark and I were talking, there's a number of pieces of legislation up in the General Assembly dealing with how condemnation compensation might change and be paid. And I don't understand all the mechanics of it, but I did ask the city attorney if he could come back, the approach, and let us not just look at each of them, but look at the whole array of them, and we could look at them collectively and take a position on, then as a body, as to whether or not those are pieces of legislation we think are good or bad. But from what I've understood, they could be right and expensive, or they could be wrong and expensive, but I think we got to look at those and be able to express to our local delegation what we think, because we are condemning a lot of right-of-way.
Very good. Any other comments? Yes, ma'am?
Yep, I have two exciting things that's happening in Kemsville. Last week, we had the grand opening of the Top Golf, and several great golfers were out there. I gave a try on it, but we're really excited because that has brought 450 new jobs to the area. And when I talked with the national executive, he said that out of their 24 Top Golf areas, we are far exceeding on the national level.
They took, and they had a record night during the winter.
Yes, during the winter.
In one night's revenues, a record night for the whole system.
They have very good heaters.
And I will tell you, I went by there yesterday, it was 33 degrees as I was going by there, parking lot's full. It's raining, the parking lot's full. I mean, it's, it's, and it ain't cheap.
I've seen them in Japan, they're very popular.
It's, it's great, it's great.
And the second is to mention that our Kemsville EMS volunteer squad, they received, again, another grant with their 50/50 match, so they have ordered six ambulants, and we will be, Kemsville EMS squad will be the first squad in the city to have the new hydraulic power-loading gurney in every one of those six ambulances.
That's fighting worse for some parts of the city now. I mean, yeah, okay, we'll see if we can catch up with you down at the oceanfront.
Okay.
That's, that's great news, great news.
Yes, thank you.
Last night, Bill McCauley and Karen Lasley made a presentation at the Sandbridge Civic League meeting about the possible ordinances, you know, just very first-step things that might be done to address the event houses. There was good spirited discussion, and I think now these possibilities are being disseminated around the city so everybody can know about them. But just to let you know, in case you start to get calls, that Bill made a, a very strong point over and over again, that, you know, these weren't proposed ordinances, they were just starting points, and that we, you know, we need the input from the community and they are appointing a committee that will try to work both sides together to come to a, an agreement, but we'll see.
Well, Barbara, I think I'll speak for the entire city council and staff, we wish you a lot of luck.
Success on Middle East on your next task.
If we're looking forward to that agreement, everyone agrees on it, win-win.
We're gonna, we're gonna work on it.
We're gonna get it. Now, I'm optimistic, I really am. Any other comments?
One thing, there was a lively discussion this morning at the Development Authority, Economic Development Authority, meeting, in which the issue of tourism gap financing came up, and there was a letter written that basically reflects the conversation that took place in the meeting this morning. And the letter reads, "The Virginia Beach Development Authority was given a presentation of the 27th Street Hotel Project by Patty Phillips, Director of Finance, and Doug Smith, Acting City Manager. After discussion, the Virginia Beach Development Authority passed a motion to request city council indefinitely defer any action on the use of the state's tourism development financing program until additional public vetting has occurred." And the letter goes on, but that's basically what they, the motion said, and so Rosemary and I felt obligated to give you that information.
We thank you very much. Okay, any other comments? All right, I've got a vision. The agenda. How about all on consent, folks?
Except for one thing.
What's that?
The, on the planning item pertaining to farm stands, the city attorney informed me, we're going to have to defer that to February the 16th.
And if you'll note that I'm abstaining on the planning item number one, to Santiago LaVara, please, as I did last week, this is a repeat. Barbara?
On the authorization for the acquisition of property for the Muddy Creek and Indian River roads, I'm making this written disclosure regarding that property. I have an ownership interest in land adjacent to the property that's the subject of this ordinance. I'm a member of a group of three or more persons whose property is affected by the transaction in the right fashion. But although the city attorney has advised me that the Act allows me to participate in this transaction upon disclosure of these facts, I've chosen to abstain from voting on this matter. So if you will mark me as an extension on three days.
On what?
Three days.
Three, six. All right, everybody okay?
No, I'm not, I'm not. I've got a lot of concerns about the SIPSA because it's asking us to approve it for 50 years, but yet it doesn't tell us what, if we've been able to renegotiate a tipping fee, and I, I can't vote for it the way it is unless I know more.
So Rose, I asked a lot of those questions because I was concerned, was this irrevocable or this notional, did this commit us to anything? And the answer back from the city attorney was, "No, we aren't committing, we aren't making an agreement, we're just expressing that those are terms and things of interest that we could potentially support, but we're not actually committing to anything." That's the first thing I asked, was this an obligation? No, it represents a, a good-faith guidance of things that we would act favorably on in the future without committing ourselves.
Yeah, so the city manager, city attorney agreeing, and Doug agreeing, and Dave Hanson agreeing. So are you okay?
I think this is a piece that we need to move forward with negotiations, you know, when they're reaching a critical thing.
I just want to make sure we're not committing to something without having all of our ducks in a row, and it really scared me, actually.
That was my exact concern.
It actually scared me that we're, you know, we, we don't have a dollar amount, and we're, we've already got this large fee that we're, trash fee.
Dave, you want to?
If I may.
If I may. The Use and Support Agreement is the binding document. We cannot, they have drafted a Use and Support Agreement, we can't even bring it before you all because our interests, our vested interests in the SIPSA landfill, the regional landfill, is at risk because the board's not taking the appropriate action. If they take the appropriate action that we're asking you to endorse, then we'll have risk reduction long-term and we can have an affordability discussion. And the Use and Support Agreement is what specifies that disposal method in the post-2018 era. So it's a different document.
How long could this go on without us having that other document?
The Use and Support Agreement?
What we're voting on today.
This is a resolution that says, we need you to do your job to protect the asset that we're a member of in the regional landfill, and you haven't done your job to satisfy the requirements of the CUP with the City of Suffolk. City of Suffolk City Manager sits on the SIPSA board and has openly spoken and, and told the SIPSA board, you do not have the authority to open cell seven, therefore you don't have a 50-year solution for landfilling. And that's what we're saying is, we endorse the fact that they need to get their act together with the CUP compliance and be able to keep that landfill open in the many decades to come.
This is just too important not to make sure that we know exactly what we're...
Yes, ma'am. And, and without this, it would be very hard for me to come before you and recommend that we sign the Use and Support Agreement, therefore we would be catapulted in January of 2018 to our, to our own devices to figure out a solution. And unless they resolve these issues, we're not going to be able to, to stay a regional partner, which is really the goal that we have at this point.
But Rose, you're right, at some point, there's a red line because we have, and we have to go out and initiate, which, you know what our recourse is, it's our own asset. So at some point, you get a red line where you have to initiate your own planning or you can't get there. So there is a red line somewhere in that.
But we're fortunate, we have recourse, but these, some of these other cities don't.
Okay, so you're okay? Okay, very good. Also, and we're gonna start our meeting, recognizing Fred White, who's retired from steel, who's been a dear friend to us for many, many years. And Mark?
The Vice Mayor reported accurately what I told him, but Mr. McCauley has told me that we've already advertised that second planning item so it can be on for February 2nd rather than waited to the 16th, if that's acceptable.
Anyone object to that? Okay, good. All right, I'll now entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711A, Code of Virginia, as amended for the following purposes: publicly held property, discussion or consideration of acquisition of real property for public purpose, or the disposition of publicly held property, where discussion or open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A3. Beach District, Beach District. Public contract, discussion of the award of a public contract involved in the expansion of public funds and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract, where discussion or open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or the negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A29. Beach District, Beach District. Personnel matters, discussion, consideration of or interviews with prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1. Council appointments, council, boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Do you have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
Mr. Davenport?
Aye.
Mr. Dyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Dr. Rossammons?
Aye.
Mr. Ern?
Mrs. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?